All right.
We're recording.
We just have Elena.
Just Elena.
Okay. All right, so we'll open at 6:04. Any minutes?
I missed it.
It was like the word "the" was missing or something like that. Somebody asked for updates on something, that's where it is.
In New Year's, New Year's day, whatever. Looks like the meeting has a reminder. So, yes, all in favor. Sorry, that's your job.
Okay, was there any other change you wanted to make or just the one revision?
Does that?
Okay, so if it works for you, we'll rearrange our agenda and we'll have Jeff go first and then you can stay and hang out if you want, otherwise, ready to go.
It might be a riveting meeting, you never know.
Or not.
Some unexpected guests.
So then I'll move that we revise the agenda to move new business prior to public comment.
Works for me.
All there? All right, so. We have a situation where the town, actually Elena, I'll turn it over to you. You, you, this.
Elena, you there? She's muted.
Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can hear you.
Okay, I can't see anybody.
That's because you don't have your. You're looking at the people, your video on. We can't see you either. You don't have that. Here you are. Hi.
I was gonna say, I turned it on and I could see myself, I just couldn't see anybody else. Okay. Perfect, okay, so. Um. I missed the first part of what Tyler said, it skipped out, but I'm assuming we're talking about the North Guilford Road first.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so this is a property that was, the town already has foreclosed on, and so. Originally, we thought that we could talk about this in an executive session, but it turns out that we can't, but basically what it is now is you guys have have the opportunity to talk with him and discuss kind of some of the options that you guys are willing to work with him on for the time being, and if you can come up with some sort of agreement, we can have it wrote up as such, and then if the agreement is broken, and then of course, that's then the town owns the property and then we have to do what we think is best with the property.
All righty, thanks, so I think we all, we've talked about this before, so we're familiar with the situation and thought that the most productive thing would be just for us to speak together and try to figure out a resolution, so what's on your mind?
Well, I have $1,300 now, and then on the third next month, I'll have the other 1,100, and I think it's like 20, or 23 something. So that's all I can think of.
That's the, you said the 3rd of February?
Yeah.
The 3rd of February, so, so basically the proposal is to pay in full prior to the next select board meeting. Is that, is that what I understand?
Yeah.
And that is all of the taxes due, or just the fact that they caused the foreclosure to occur?
No, that would be all of it.
All of them, so you'd be completely up to date with payment of $2,400.
Yeah.
That would be a wonderful thing.
Yeah, it would be great for me.
If you want, I can. That's okay.
I wouldn't have been able to make my shift.
Is there anything? After that's all paid up, what was the process for? Basically, then at the next meeting, we'll have a quick claim deed for you guys to sign and we'll file it with the registry and that will be that.
All right, so, yeah, so I make the motion that the town be willing to sign a quick claim deed at the next select board meeting, assuming that the taxes are paid in full.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. All right, thank you.
I have cash.
I can take it and I'll just put it, I'll put it and leave a note for the girls tomorrow to ring it in, I won't be here, but we can get it rung in tomorrow and if you want to stop by and get a receipt if you want to, or we can just hold on to it for you.
Or do you want me to bring it tomorrow?
Or I can mail it to them.
Yeah, we can mail you a receipt also, either way, whatever your most, you can stop in tomorrow and pay it if you'd rather.
Okay. I'm gonna be open at?
At eight, yeah. Not seven.
You may have to deal with me at eight, though.
Come at nine, because then sure, there'll be somebody here who can bring it in, so, okay, awesome.
All right, thanks.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, seeing as nobody else here, we'll close public comment and move on to select board reports, too.
So we had, I don't know how long ago, it was like the last snowstorm or two or three, because everything happens on the weekends, right? So there was a citizen that had sort of an emergency situation, because a new snowplow person kind of plowed the wrong road going into Indian Point there. And so, just happened to know me and messaged me and I passed it on to you, because I didn't know how we get ahold of Elena, who, you know, or Steve, and so Elena, Sandra and I were talking at one point, and Elena had come up with this great kind of solution of like who to rely, of how we can handle those kinds of situations and off hours, so Elena, do you want to kind of chime in on your idea?
Yeah, so basically, the sheriff's department has record of all general assistants and road commissioners kind of thing, and so like, instead, a lot of towns, instead of posting like your cell phone number on the door, which I actually did do that, but a lot of towns will give their information, contact information to the sheriff's department, and so like, in emergency situations such as that one, you could call the sheriff's department and they would be able to, you know, get in contact with me or Chad or however. However, we set it up that way, probably going to the road commissioner is the best, best way, other than just going to Chad, because. But yeah.
And then the road commissioner could connect with Chad.
Right, right, yeah.
But what you're saying is in any emergency, the sheriff's office would be the point of contact when the town office wasn't open, and they would then know who to contact, be it Chad or.
Right, right.
Fire department or, you know, whoever it might be.
Right.
That makes.
Yeah, exactly, and like you said, I mean, if you can't, like if you're physically blocked in your house and like, you can't be reached by EMS or fire or whatever, you know, that could inbound in by a snowplow, like, that would be deemed necessarily to call somebody to say, hey, this happened, like, this could be an emergency situation. So, yeah, definitely. A good resource.
But not just on the door, but on the town website.
Town website, yeah.
Other public places.
And, yeah, for emergencies, I was gonna say, yeah. So, great idea, thank you.
Yeah.
Um, just a question, the, and I probably know the answer to this, but I'm gonna ask it anyway, because I saw another town sign wasn't working, the flashing speed sign. Is it battery, solar?
It's battery and the battery's been removed, they're not supposed to be.
In the winter, that's what I thought.
Oh, all right.
And last meeting, in our minutes, we talked about the Indian Point Town Parcel, and Heather had suggested possibly looking into other rights of way that were out there. I just didn't want to lose sight of that, I don't know if we have any more information about that since the last meeting. Probably not, because you guys are busy.
Yeah. No, I, I did try to look through some of the folders that we have for town properties, just to see if there was anything in there, but as far as like a deed or an access or something, that might give us a little bit of a clue as to where to go from here, but that's as far as I've gone so far.
Okay, we'll just keep following up.
And it's. Yep, yeah, definitely.
Okay, and last question, also, we talked about last meeting, being done, and putting some of those bank accounts possibly into a CD to earn more, more interest, and I don't know, again, I just didn't want to lose sight of that piece.
We have signed up with the bank for the fraud protection, so it's all in the works, but we haven't gotten to that part yet.
Okay.
We haven't redeployed any funds yet.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, no, as of right now, it has just gone, those funds have just gone into our checking account for us to decide what to do with.
Thank you, Elena, that's all.
Of course.
We had this discussion with.
Yeah. It's only people from the Midwest.
Yeah, well, so someone polluted me somewhere along.
That would have been ten.
I'm sorry about that.
No, it's okay. I covered. For supper.
Sandra, you're up next.
Okay, so you covered the speed signs below my list, the flags up front are bugging me, because they are, the American flag needs to be burned, it needs to go to the Legion, it's shredding. They're never at full staff, and we need to do a better job of maintaining the flags in front of our town office.
Did you say that the Historical Society has some that you think they might be willing to?
Yeah, we bought, Historical Society bought new flags for the April event in the gym, so we have brand new US and.
They might be ours, because I did too, are we talking about the same flag?
Maybe we are, in any event, we own them, we just need to get them up, but what we really need to do is make sure somebody's in charge of the flags.
We had this conversation.
Yeah, we've had this conversation before, after I became one of you. It was suggested that perhaps Jimmy Erickson would be a good candidate for that. Because he likes to have things to do. If he owned a flagpole, it would be in perfect shape. Right?
It would. Yep.
It would be the best one in town, for sure.
Ever, in the whole state of Maine.
That's not a bad thing.
Yeah, and as far as it not going, it goes up, they're up as high as they will go, so I don't know if.
There's a gap of several feet.
Right, yeah.
About the pole, so maybe the, whatever you call the ropes that raise them up, but it's a small thing, but it's meaningful to a lot of people in town, so we really need to.
Oh, yeah, no, definitely important.
So we will. If we can't come up with a better plan, talk to.
I think Jimmy would be thrilled to be asked, and I don't know him well, but, you know.
Well, no, he would be, and the thing, my only concern with that is like, even I don't always get notifications that they need to be at half staff, so how would he as the thing?
Well, and I talked to Molly today, she'd been out of town.
Yeah.
So I forgot about that, that was on my list of things to talk to Molly about, I'll find out how the postal service is made aware, because their flag is always where it should be, and if she can communicate somehow with us, somebody here in the town office.
There's gonna be some listserv or.
Yeah, yeah, a small thing.
Well, yeah, that's what I was thinking, too.
Flags, the perennial telephone conversation, any luck on getting anybody to go in on the cellphone tower in Monson?
Believe it or not, yes.
Oh, I love it.
So, nothing more to say than that, but yes, it's a heated conversation.
Good, that's, that's excellent news. And that's all I have.
All right, Elena, I saw that T-Pass testing results were the news today, did we get anything back yet?
Yeah, we did, actually, all of our test results came back good.
Yeah. We can drink the water. Any?
Yes.
Have we been able to make progress on the conversation with Consolidated about our pole licenses?
We reached out to them today, and, oh, sorry. I had an update.
No, it's okay.
Jade did call them, the guy, because he didn't email back, so he's gonna, there was a different person that he needed to check with. And so he was going to check with her and get back to us, and he did not get back to us yet, but I'm assuming it's gonna be okay, because we do have permission to put stuff on the poles, so that's where that is, hopefully he'll call back tomorrow, otherwise, maybe Jade can call him again.
Super, thanks. And then, we could talk about this later, but I just wanted to flag Elena that for the, for the EV charging, we may want to think when we're, when we're doing the excavation work and some of the prep work, we may want to do it to give us the flexibility to add additional chargers in the future. And adding an extra conduit or sizing up wires, whatever, whatever it may be, just wanted to play it to see about making it kind of upgrade a lot. Digging is expensive part.
Yeah. Yeah, no, it really is.
Yeah, I think that was the only, those were the only things on my mind for today. So, next up is town manager report.
Okay, so hang on just one second, I'm just gonna pull up something. I don't have very much. My computer will work with me, I don't have very many updates, other than what was on my town manager report, we had lots of holidays between now and then, and Marty, was Kent able to get you his code enforcement update?
Yeah, I gave them all copy, I'll leave it.
Okay.
Copy on your desk for tomorrow.
Oh, thank you.
Maybe.
Yeah, well, we talked about that last time, and I did tell him, and he didn't hold it on, and when he brought me that, he couldn't remember the date off the top of his head, so he's aware, so hopefully next time.
We're making baby steps here.
Yeah, we're making progress.
We, yes, that's right. Um. I just am trying to find, um. John Simcoe was supposed to get me some options back to me today, but he also had a lot of meetings, he said, today, so he wasn't 100% sure if he'd be able to give them back to me, and since I don't have them, I'm assuming he got tied up, but when I do have those back, I will, I will send those along, but, like I said, we have some playing time, considering how long it's gonna take for this truck to be like built, and so when I talked to the sales rep, he said, you know, like financing, because I was like, like, I need a number, because we, we need to figure this out, and he was like, oh, I mean, you have plenty of time, because it's taking a long time for them to even get to this, because I was nervous, I'm like, you went and had it and ordered it already, like, I didn't even commit, but he's like, no, we, we have some time to even cancel the order, because it's taking them so long to even process the order, so I was like, oh, okay, well, at least, you know, we know that we need a truck, so at least we have a little bit of a head time on there, and then the original quote that they gave us was like 84 something, and at the very last second, when he sent me the whole invoice and everything, I realized that it was actually for a diesel, and what the RFP was for, it was for a gas, so the actual quote now is, or bid, is 74 to 50, so almost $10,000 less than the diesel, which was a nice surprise. So that is.
It seemed to me, when I looked at this earlier, that the total we're gonna spend this way to be less than what we have in reserve. Yeah. So, we've got.
Yes.
But should we have?
Yes, so we do have the funds.
RFP?
Well, yeah, so.
And maybe I'm ahead of myself, but it seems like we often.
I think so, so Elena, keep, keep going, what were you gonna say?
Okay, um, it skipped over most of what she just said, but that, that's one of.
She was, she was that old, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, I've been chastised.
Okay, perfect, okay, um, so. Yeah, basically, what we need is how much we want to leave in our reserve, because obviously, we don't want to just be like, okay, well, we have all this money, we should just clean it out, because, you know, we're gonna need other equipment, and it's always nice to, well, that's what the reserve is for, is a quote unquote, some rainy day funds, but. So there's 99,000 in there right now, and and that was one of the things that I asked John, is if he could give us some other scenarios as to like what the terms would look like, what the payments would look like, depending on how much money we plan to finance or whatever, because in, I mean, 74,000, that would still leave us like 20, 25 in the reserve, but then we need, you know, the plant and sander, so we might get a better deal if we finance part of the truck versus a plant and sander or something like that, so that, those were kind of the questions that I wanted John to give us some options on, that way we know what our best choices are. What is everybody else thinking for how, like a ballpark as to how much we want to finance?
Well, so I'm gonna answer a different question, which is that the, we're not making this purchase in isolation, right, it's in the context of the broader plan that we have for, for this department's equipment, and so, and we, we need to see that plan, first of all, and make sure that the could, it's all ties in with the budget, budgeting process, right, to make sure that we're, we're funding that reserve account to cover, cover our needs looking ahead, so there's no, there's no clear way to answer, how much should we take out of this?
Yet.
Yeah. An important piece of it, too, is the, is the finance terms, right, we don't know what those finance terms are, and so we need to consider that, and we also need to have like the full package here, so like the point that you raised about, you know, probably aren't gonna finance a pile in a sander, but we need, we should know how much those are gonna cost, we should also know how much we're gonna get by trading in or selling, I guess we, they recommended we just sell ourselves, right, but.
That's what I remember.
Yeah.
Yeah, so anyway, those, those types of residual values, et cetera. We need all that information.
So we need a package put together detailing this whole process in time for the budget planning process.
Elena, how, how far out are they estimating that, you know, this can happen, Chuck, be here?
Um, well. According to the sales rep, he said he doesn't have a crystal ball, which was not a very nice answer, but the other gentleman that I spoke to that, that it's taking like three to four months, but they'll give us updates usually, and he said, you know, if he, if I haven't heard from him in a while, to just check back in, just to make sure everything's like the order is still being processed and things haven't, you know, gotten lost in, in the mumble, jumble of things.
So we don't have a deadline.
But I did get, uh. No, no, we don't, and that's why, when I talked to John, we to, to just give us some options, and then another thing that he asked was, so it's going to be, you know, like four months out before the truck is even for, at least, before the truck is even delivered, and he was saying that typically, you would close when the truck is delivered, but where interest rates are changing so much, he wanted to give us the option to close before the truck was delivered, but he didn't give me what the interest rates and stuff would be yet, I'm assuming that would be part of his, his stuff that he's going to send me.
My, I was, my question kind of got cut off, and I'm sorry, because it cut you off, do we have a deadline? Cancel.
Um, he did not tell me what the deadline is, but the, the he basically made it seem like, don't worry about it, like, that they'll sell it if, if we don't end up wanting, they're gonna sell it anyways, kind of thing. So, i- he certainly wasn't like, okay, this is your, you are committed to this, because I told him, you know, this, this is not 100%, we still have to go through all the other, you know, process, and he's like, well, no, I just want to get the ball rolling for you, so you're not waiting so long.
And to answer your question directly, is that this will go ahead, go to town meeting for approval?
So it would be June before we could get approval? So to spend reserve money, we need town approval, gotcha, and how does money get into reserve, does that get budgeted?
Yeah.
Okay, so if we have a better picture going into the budget cycle for planning purposes, and then if we need a special town meeting, so we can have a nice shiny truck available.
Combine it with the, the.
The EV, oh, the internet, yeah.
Yeah, I had planned on having this be part of the special town meeting that we're having next month, is that too soon, do you think, or is it gonna just depend on if we can get our answers?
Yeah.
With.
Yeah, okay.
But it sounds like we'll have the answers, delivery date's going to be an open question, I imagine, given the way of the world these days.
So, but I'm just thinking, this first process here, I don't think this is gonna happen in the next 30 days, because we're gonna have to write a warrant, go to the warrant, post it, yeah, so.
Right, but we're, we're having one anyways for just the ARPA funds, and that was something, since we're on the topic, so what exactly, is that gonna be just for ARPA funds, but you, you guys had talked about something else that you wanted to have.
Resiliency?
But yeah, is that still, but I know you guys didn't have your meetings.
Was it use of climate resiliency or the?
Right, right, but that does need a special town meeting, that's, that's just a gathering, yeah.
So we can just have it be for the ARPA funds?
And the truck.
And the truck, if we can get it, that would be.
And I suspect we can, so.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Did we have a date set in February or an estimate of when?
The 12th, I thought it was, that was the next select board meeting, we were gonna have it.
Right.
Bingo, that's right, yeah.
On the, of the night, right?
Yeah, five o'clock, we said.
But we still need to write a warrant and.
Right, so we've got, that's, it's gotta be posted seven days, all right.
The ninth is the next select.
So perhaps we might just have to maybe call a, a special quick select board meeting, just to get that signed and.
Or we could just, we, what we could do is have all the, if we could get this information for the next regular select board meeting, then we can have a special time meeting, we'll be here to back it up.
Okay, and that'll be for everything, yeah, okay.
That sounds like a lead winner.
Sorry, sorry, Elena, I forgot to ask, you just brought up, where are we at with the climate resiliency planning meeting? Do you know, Marty?
I don't know. We were waiting for, I think, that person to have a date that she could meet with us.
She's in the legislature, though, that's the problem.
She's back.
Can you hear us, Elena?
We don't need broadband in this county.
We gotta hear, they need it in Brownville.
Yeah. Hello? Oh dear. Well, when she can get back, she will, I expect.
She doesn't look present. Elena, can you hear us? She's muted, you sound muted.
And she's gone again.
Anyway, so we'll come back for town committee reports.
You're looking at me? Why? Snow roller day planning in progress with the events committee, festival committee, whatever we call it here. We have a new volunteer for the beautification committee, but we need to make sure they're really sincere, and we should have a meeting sometime next week. All right, that's all I have to say, super, okay, thanks.
All right, we're all over the place here tonight, right? Now the main event, all right, the DOT building partnership proposal singular.
Yep.
So we got the info?
Terrific.
Read it all, do you wanna, do you wanna kick things off, or how do you wanna do this?
Uh, I can't kick things off.
Uh, I can't kick things off. I think a few questions, I guess, for you. You've all read Girl Palmer's proposal. And it sounds, how does it sound to you? Is it reflective of the RFP that was that was sent out? And does that proposal sort of meet the needs of the community as as kind of framed enough over the spring and summer?
I think I I had two thoughts. One is. I think it's a good collab that they have with Asino.
Yeah.
Yes, you know, Seth knows this area well, he knows what we're talking about. My, the only concern I would have about the proposal is that Girl Palmer's. Like. An engineering firm as opposed to a design, like a placemaking firm, if that makes sense. Not that we need a placemaking firm, but when I, I think it makes sense, they would bring in somebody like Asino to balance that. You know, intersection design.
Right.
Uh, resume, but the scope really decided they're gonna help with like renderings and stuff. So I guess. Have you seen them work together in the, on anything else, maybe like this partnership specifically, but how how you might see that?
I can try and answer that. I have not seen Girl Palmer and Asino work together specifically. They have bid other projects very similar to this. And I think that it's a pretty effective, and I'll say ongoingly more popular. Method to bring the engineering skill and offset them, like you said, the landscaping skill. Very few firms do one thing very, very well, uh, do both things very, very well, I should say. Usually they specialize in the Tatterscot, for example, VHB is able to do both, but they're an engineering heavy firm, because it's an engineering level issue. Whereas I think so much of what Monson is looking for is some engineering with some of the traffic coming in the intersection. Look, but it's a lot of also placemaking, I think it's, see this can help there. I didn't immediately have any reservations about their ability to do both, and I think. They'll work very well together. I know they have an existing relationship. So I can't beat any projects that I've seen them go through with Girl Palmer's, but a few main DOT projects, almost always on the engineering side. You know, engineering focus. Did you have any, I mean.
No, I mean, just, just, it was just a thought, just an observation, but I guess, I think Asino is like a very. What's the right word? Like a listening oriented firm.
Yep.
And like an inclusive.
Yep.
Firm. And so I think as long as they're the one driving the process with the community, I think we'll get the ideas that we want to drive. This as opposed to an engineering led process, which I think gets you to a very different place. So that's all.
Yeah, that's a, that's a terrific observation. And I think now, before going under contract with Girl Palmer, if you so choose to do so. Now's the time to sort of articulate that. And we could even go as far as having one or both firms here to express that. I know that. Don editor expects to be the project manager, he'd be likely the one driving the community conversation, but I don't think you'd ever come up here independently. Think that, I think, here as well, would be a key component of that, too. Here, maybe done asking the right questions and getting the feedback, and see this is the one. Running the things out and reflecting what's been said. So that would be my hope, and that expectation can be set upfront before we kind of get under contract and then try and. Correct that.
That's.
That's a good question, you know.
I think the, I had the good fortune of having a printed copy, and then I left it at home. Um, but there was, I guess. You know, the. One thing that's not entirely clear. Is is the. Scope in, like, think about, think about. Like even just renderings for Asino, for example, like we have the corridor, we have the, you know, at the start point and the end point.
Yep.
In the space in between, and we've talked about like, oh, can go like off the street by X distance. But that could, that's, now we're talking about the whole town essentially, right? And so I guess. Um, this is more just kind of like expectation setting for us.
Right.
You know, there's like, there's a comment there about like, oh, yeah, no, the boat launch is a great area to focus on, like it. Is, is it a reasonable expectation to think that we're gonna have, you know, ideas for how to design? Five parks as part of this exercise?
I don't know that. It it does depend on what you're expecting for an output, I guess, is the way. That I'll try and set your expectations a little bit. No, I don't think that you're gonna have necessarily this entire park designed. I think that what. Expectation is the question. So you guys have articulated this park area, I have some development opportunity. I think that there won't be a rendering that shows you have somewhere, and all of that necessarily. I think that most of the renders are gonna be throughout the corridor. Anyways, as well as the rendering around, the engineering.
So the roadway is adjacent.
Is the roadway as. Public engagement sessions perhaps on the ground here. From this feedback. I think they'll hear feedback about the boat landing and acknowledge that that's part of it, how to incorporate, how to get pedestrian level traffic and cyclist safety travelers. Into your community and engaging with the boat launches is an important piece. There may not be robust engineering around it, but it will be. A publicly informed plan to go forward and work on that engineering independently, whether that's part of a larger funding mechanism or. A second round of, a second round of planning you choose to do, and then apply for competitive large funds to implement. So. You'll have a pretty good plan for your main street, and you'll have. Sort of a memorial on the thought process around the town.
And this is, yeah, I mean, this is very much of a, you know, chapter one.
Yeah.
Piece, right? And so for, remind me what. I guess Sanford was a good example, right? Of like having gone through multiple, multiple phases. Is it? Is it that we would try to leverage this with other other DOT programs or? What's, what would pass forward?
Yeah, there are a few, which is really why the initial focus here is on coming up with publicly informed plan that the town subscribes to as well. They have some engineering and landscape architecture, but most importantly for the DOT, honestly, is some of the engineering components. Of a plan that's going to fit within the scope of what you have here for space. And it is a, you know, wide picked corridors, there's some options. But that it's been informed and subscribed to by you all. When that plan is complete, that's the most important part, when it's all scoped out, we can find a funding mechanism for it. Um, I don't want to guarantee that it's X or Y, raise grants are quite large, and depending on what comes out of the study, it may not worth. I'd be surprised if it was twenty five million dollars, but frankly, right? Yeah, I think it's a more modest amount of length. Um, for this part of this corridor. So perhaps a congressionally directed spending request would be successful. In the few, two, a dozen million dollars. Again, depending on what you want to do and what comes out of that study. So we'll work with the town to find a funding mechanism after the plan is is agreed to. And you could hear. Once from the town that can't feasibly be done with it, but you know, from the opinion of an engineer. And then the town sort of might not be comfortable with the recommendations that are put forward. So those are things that we'll kind of work on in the next eight to ten months. Once everyone's on the same page with that, we can find the funding that is, one, is the timing, and two, fits the scope. Could be a number of things. The other thing, speaking of timing, I wanted to mention as well, I was here tonight, that. I do believe maybe a T has received congressional directed spending to rebuild this corridor. Um, I think all the way from Abbott all the way to Greenville, and my expectation is that's as soon as twenty four and as late as twenty six. I think there's actually a spending deadline on those funds. So it isn't in those second, third, and fourth year out from now. Retrofitting any of the desires of the town to make this walkable by pedestrian human scale location. Probably need to be sort of in process before that happens. So it could be part of the planning for that project.
We need to get moving.
Yeah, that, I, 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 yes, I am. Yeah, it doesn't have to be tonight, it could be like.
Tomorrow.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. But next year. It may be a generation before.
Right.
All of those opportunities are before you. Again, there'll always be something we can do, but to the scale you're looking at. We're looking in the very short term.
Yeah, so my concern is actually that window's closed already. Are you saying it's still open?
I'm saying I hope it's still open. And having something, you know, I think the the timeline and the expectations from Girl Palmer, her to have a plan in place this year. I I don't think those, that window's closed, but it is closing, yeah. Yeah.
We can make things happen fairly quickly in town. I guess my concern is more. The other parties involved.
Well, so I'm, yeah, I mean, well, we, we need to. Accept this proposal and recommend a warrant article for it, right? That's, that's kind of the, that's the action item here. Um, so we could, we could presumably do that on the same schedule that we're, we're talking about for this, this other meeting. Um, but since it's, it's a reimbursement. Model, right? We would have to authorize the full bend and then try to get it back later. For what's worth, I've heard that I think Dover Fox Truff is trying to using the climate resiliency grant. As part of their match, yeah.
Right. And they're, they're confident that that's an eligible expense.
They seem to be.
I'm not sure that it's not. I couldn't speak to the climate resilience funds, I mean.
Um, we wouldn't be able to do it. In advance, anyway, just given timing of everything, but maybe as a, as part of the. Retroactively covering the bus, but. You've had some, some time to scroll through on your little.
Yes, I have. Well, I did go over it last week.
Okay, just a minor thing maybe, but it could be big to some folks in town. We're not just a Norwegian here.
I did catch that, and I wanted to say, wrong Scandinavian country.
Scandinavia.
Swedish.
And Welsh.
And Welsh, not Norwegian.
That's not Matt, that's Don, we'll blame Don for that.
Just get out.
Stuck in the bud immediately.
Still wanted to say.
Yeah, I picked right up on that.
You're running out of town.
Indeed.
I mean, I'm totally on board. I think this, this is great, and we should. I'd like to recommend that we, you put it forward for, for. A special time meeting approval, but.
Yes.
So you're, you're thinking of adding this to the special town meeting?
Yeah, gonna be more going on special town meeting than town meeting.
Other than your, your question, there were no surprises when I looked over, you know, after we had talked and the initial information gave us, so. I'm good, too.
I'm really excited to see this moving, because. I don't leave my house without thinking, we gotta do something.
Yeah.
Um, can you help me understand your timeframe and the amount of money you have set aside, and sort of when you'd be comfortable signing an agreement with? Girl Palmer.
Yes.
More from my information than.
Yeah, yeah. So, so we'll vote to approve, vote to accept this bid.
Sure.
And then the next step is to fund it. So we will need to have a special time meeting to ask the residents to approve the spending. Um, in the meantime, we'll figure out. I don't know offhand exactly where any of these funds would come from, so I'm assuming that we would need to raise the full amount, or, you know, use our, our surplus to do that. And. We're. Tentatively planning what second half of February would be when that special time meeting takes place, okay?
Um, I would ask that you continue an open conversation with Girl Palmer about the timing of that. By the time probably in February rolls around and the funding is available for you to cook up, signing the agreement. I can't speak, I certainly don't speak for Don or Girl Palmer, but the proposal that was provided, it will be about two months old at that point, and if they take in additional work and no longer have the same capacities. That's, you might, I would encourage the town to communicate with Girl Palmer as soon as possible in his office, possible about that. That fact, if Girl Palmer's still finding that, that's no problem. The DOT has the funds set aside, we're, we're all set. And we're flexible on the timeframe. Our agreement also has to be signed before you sign an agreement with them. So as soon as you know, we can have that agreement ready to go. You could even sign it now if you so chose, and then the award is independent, that's the binding agreement. So those are just sort of my two, two takeaways there.
Okay, Elena, have you been able to hear?
And you're muted, you're gonna have to unmute so we can hear you.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, perfect. Okay, yes, I did, I did hear all that.
Okay, any, any, just any quick thoughts on whether we. Uh, have some money somewhere that we would be able to use for this type of initiative, or whether we'd have to raise the the whole fund?
Um, I'm thinking that we would have to raise the whole fund. But that, that's just where I sit right now. We might be able to come up with some creative options, but I think that's, that's where we're gonna go.
Yeah, okay.
The worst case, and maybe we can do better.
And would that be raise after July one?
No, no, this would be February.
Okay.
So we would, we would just, we would authorize spending from surplus as opposed to raising.
Yeah, right, okay.
Okay. Any other, any other thoughts in your mind, Elena?
Um, I think you guys have pretty much covered it.
So then in the, in the meantime, if you want to coordinate with Matt on any other documents that we need to get taken care of, so that everything's queued up and ready to go for the next meeting.
Yes.
Cool. All right, then in that case, I will move that we accept Girl Palmer's bid for. Planning feasibility study. Uh, sorry. I'm just trying to read the saddle here, it doesn't make sense, actually. I, I moved that we accept Girl Palmer's bid for the Monson planning feasibility study. On paper?
Hi.
All right. Um, there we go.
Terrific. Thanks, you both. Thank you all.
Thank you.
I was, I should have been introduced to go to dealer, main DOT's active transportation planner at the very beginning. That's who this is.
Hi.
We, we spent the day on the road and we're able to drive up and down here real briefly, so. Thank you for your time, and I'll continue to communicate with Elena.
Appreciate coming out on a stormy night.
Sure.
Exactly.
Um, I live in Randolph, just outside of Gardner, and it's close by, so we're headed, yeah, hour and a half all the way to Augusta. We, thanks very much. We started the day in Brewer, and ended up in Patton.
Oh, my word.
And then came back down to Brewer and overthrew, yeah.
You guys like each other?
We still do now.
Well, thanks. All right, next up, we have the EV charger, efficiency main grant.
I'm just waiting for it to load up on my computer. Um, yeah, so I did get in touch with Bob's back, or stats, and from Carbondate, just so that he is kept in the loop that we did. Receive funding for the incentive letter from efficiency main. And he actually was going to join our meeting today, but then he got tied up with something. So. I'm just trying to. Find it. Is this, um, also a reimbursement? Thing?
You recharge.
I was gonna ask you.
Yeah. I, I'm almost certain that that's what I read, but now that we started talking about the DOT thing, I feel like. I'm second guessing myself and crossing the two, but I swear, okay. Hmm, yeah, reimbursement, okay. So this one would require all the funds. Or, or paying the bills as they come in first. Which would be twenty three. I think was the. The total. Sorry, I'm just trying to scan this real. Sorry, I'm just trying to scan this real quick. To see if I had the trouble. Um, anyways, uh, so this is something that we talked about, maybe using the rest of the um. Arfa funds for. This was one of the options. Are, are we still doing that?
Well, let's, let's back up a second. So what's the, what's the total project cost?
I am trying to find that, but it's not in this letter and I, it's on my desk, so. Um, but it's, it's a, it's twenty-three thousand, but I don't know what the hundred dollars is.
Okay. Um, twenty-three thousand and our total ARPA amount is sixty-three?
I believe so.
Yep.
And we're spending how much on the broadband?
Fifty.
Fifty, so thirteen. That was where I.
All right, so the total project cost of twenty-three thousand for this, we get fourteen thousand for the. From efficiency main, and then we get two thousand per plug, so four thousand more. Nature conservancy, so that's five K left. All right, all sounds good to me.
What was the, I'm sorry, again, what was the the total of it? Did you say twenty-three?
For the, the the chargers?
For the whole, yeah, should be.
Yeah, twenty-three.
Twenty-three, so um. We get. We get, uh, say those. Again, fourteen thousand?
Fourteen thousand from efficiency main, and then four thousand from the nature conservancy.
The town have to put in twenty percent in order to get the. Four thousand from nature conservancy?
Uh, no, ten percent.
Ten percent?
Yeah.
So as long as we. Put in three hundred dollars. Well, good. And it looks like that will work. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Awesome.
So does this need to be part of the special time?
I was just gonna say that.
Yeah.
Written in your head?
Yeah, I I'll, I'll help you read the word. It's it's clear in my head.
So will we have to, will we have to fund the full twenty-three K and then be reimbursed?
Yeah, so the language, yeah, gonna be like, you know. Spend this much to be offset by yada, yada, yada.
Okay.
We are really gonna be at forefront.
I was, hey, look, I just, I just took a screenshot of the map, of the main map. And.
About that.
Right, will be a really good.
Yeah, the only other ones in Greenville.
Oh, Greenville does have one.
One Indian Hill and one at Blair Hill.
Really? Okay, well.
Electrical desert, that's us.
We want people to do this, we need to do this stuff.
Um.
Love it.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we um. Ex, I guess we accept the grant award from efficiency main. And. Proceed with presentation of this expenditure at the special town meeting.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm sure Marty's got it all too, but. Yeah.
Um, all in favor? All right.
Now we get to the.
Now the real money, now the real money. All right, next topic, Gully Brook Bridge.
I could not believe the number I saw there.
Hey, sorry, Elena, before we go to Gully Brook, um, we cut, we cut you off on the town manager report when uh, when you went missing on the internet. But did you have, was there anything else left to discuss there?
No, no, it it was just, just the truck and I I will send along the information when I get it.
Okay, perfect, thanks. Um, all right, Gully Brook Bridge.
So is this now, because last time we talked, and and maybe it's just the verbiage, but. Um, and I I just pulled up the map to um. They, I thought last time we talked, they, it wasn't necessarily a bridge, but they were gonna rework the. I'm trying to say. The culvert? Or is this like a route?
Yeah, so. Um, I was a little bit confused. In some of the emails too, so I I, I kind of called him because. At first he was like, you know, um, it's twenty-six thousand dollars just, just for the aluminum piece that that fits there. And so, um. So then I was like, okay. And then originally he was like, maybe the town should just purchase that that aluminum arch that that's fixed there. But then um, after he. Really got to examine the area, because this was all before he had, he had come and inspected it and uh. He was just getting all information from the bridge ranger that did come. And we are still doing a essentially like reconstruction of what is there. Um, but his email kind of made it seem like it was a, it was a new bridge. So it's kind of both, it's a, we're replacing. And and it it is technically not a bridge, it's a, it's a large culvert, but um. They they still get numbers and and posted when you do bad stuff and, you know, so um. That's where. Sorry. Um, so. I had a couple of questions because um, I I spoke with Pete from DOT. About Eric because he does a a lot of work with um, lots of, lots of towns, and so Pete's very familiar with him and. He said um, that. Um, he's, that Eric is pretty familiar with um, some of. The different in infrastructure grants that um, are through like FEMA and. Some other um. The part, I don't want to say departments. Um, there's a different term that I want to use right there, but my brain is just not here today, apparently. Uh, but anyways, they're different organizations, there we go. Um. And so I I had emailed him and said, you know, Pete told me that you have some insight as to maybe some, some funding that could help us with this. Um, and he said that he was headed out for Vermont and that he would get back to me when he returns and um, we could go that and the um. The right of way things, because he's gonna come out and measure to be sure, because he was assuming that the Elliott's Field Road was a three-rod road, but. Um, according to all the documents that I have found, it's actually a four-rod road, so that would eliminate. That that need of a right of way. Okay. Which I think you would be one of those property owners.
I was just gonna say, yeah, that's, I mentioned that to my husband when I saw that, I was like, hmm, how would that work? But I'm just looking at their sketch now and. Uh, yeah, um, I'll wait till they make a. You know, decision, but I don't think it'll be a big deal.
Yeah, no, and um. Yeah, I was certainly um, surprised by the number as well, especially because, I mean, obviously. I'm not real familiar with how much it takes to build a bridge, but then I was like, it's not even a bridge, it's a giant culvert. But there are so many different um, rules and civilizations and like one of, uh, we talked about. One of the um, grants is you have to be. Making it bigger in order to qualify, and that culvert is actually already over. So he was like, you know, I I wouldn't. You shouldn't go bigger because it's, it's not necessary and um. You know, then the expense and all of that stuff, it it just, it's not feasible really. And then there's actually another culvert that's downstream that he was talking about, maybe. Um, like. If we were to collaborate the both of them, maybe there would be more um, incentive for some of the grants. Um, but he said that we could touch base about that when he comes back from Vermont. So, I basically. I'm sorry, what?
Is that the other one down Elliott's Field Road?
Um, yeah, yeah. And I think they actually just um, did something. I think DOT actually did something. On that one, according to what his email was, but. Um, I wasn't quite sure if he was talking about another bridge. Or another culvert in, in relevance to that, so I was like, oh, okay. Uh, but when he said that we would just go over it when he comes back, I was like, okay, I won't dig too further into it if you're actually going to. Come into doubt with me and explain that. Um. And. Yeah, so I just basically wanted to keep you guys in the loop um, about this bridge because, you know. This is something that obviously has been. A, a, a problem for, for a while, and I just don't want it to get to the point where we have to close the bridge so that. It can't be clo, uh, crossed by any trucks or a car truck or a fire truck or, or whatever, so. Yeah, I'm sure. Um, and yeah, and then when he said that the the bridge would have to be closed for like three weeks, I'm like, oh, my gosh.
Uh, just one week, right?
Yeah, you're one week for Logan's happy for you, yeah. Yeah, so um, we'll have to get you an airplane for a little while.
How far is your house from the?
I have a glider in my front yard.
From the bridge, from the culvert?
It's right there, our driveway's right there.
Well, so you could like, you could park and walk up to your driveway, that wouldn't be the end of the world.
Well, right, I know. Such a soft.
Is there water in this brook year round?
Yes, yeah, there is flowing right now, we've had rain, but uh, that one flows and it flows. Uh, in the spring pretty high too, but you're right, that culvert is is pretty big and it accommodates the the high spring runoff.
Um, yeah.
But it it floods in the road so that the road kind of dips at the end of like our driveway, right where that culvert is. And then it just floods the road and it ices up in the winter time as well. And there's no guardrails, so when I come down the driveway, I'm always praying that I don't slip and go off into the stream on the other side. A guardrail is really.
Yes, um, I actually, Eric and I talked about that, um, adding a guardrail because. In in his plans, it's essentially widening widening the road just. Slightly right there, and then building the road up so that it actually matches where the rest of the road is, because there's kind of a dip, which is. Why it floods and stuff, and guardrails are an absolute must, because when I first drove that down there, I was like. There's a bridge? Where? Like, how do you even? And if you're, you're not familiar with that area, I mean, that that could potentially be pretty dangerous, so. Yeah, no, definitely guardrails.
So where do we go from here with this?
Um, I think it's. One of the main things i- is having like. How do we fix this? How how much, how much is it gonna cost to fix this? That way we can plan accordingly and then having somebody like Eric. Um, who is very familiar with how you go about fixing these things when, you know. They, we are a small town and we don't have two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars to just say, all right, start next week, that should be good. Um, so at least right now, um. I'll I'll just keep working with Eric and so his biggest thing right now is wanting to know if that price is reasonable. Um. I don't really know what to say to that other than. Ye- yes, but we don't have the app, the funds available right now to pay for it. Um, so. Maybe working with him, finding funding for such projects and then um, doing what we can on our side to, to um, also fund the project.
I I would think the resiliency grants would be perfect for this, because we're talking.
Yeah.
I'm related, related, yeah.
Yeah, and and when Altina from um. EMA had visited the office, um, that was one of the things that we put in the um. Mitigish, uh, yeah, the. That's the word that I was looking for. Um. The FEMA's uh, plan that we just updated that, because it's in their plan that that gives us, you know, this is one of our priorities, this is something that we're looking for. And on it, it says um. Uh, I think it says deferred or something due to lack of funding. Or something similar to that is what they put on there. Um, so this is something that has been brought up to them in the past, so maybe that will help us. Um, that it's in that plan. Uh, get some of the FEMA funding as well.
I don't, if I could back up, just, it might relate to this, but um, I was just thinking of my thought on the um, the. Village partnership thing as well. Um, comprehensive plan. What's?
Yeah.
Like we, we kind of, that's our kind of guide, right? And what's the status?
Okay, so the status of that is we. De- depending on where we want to go from this, technically, we, we hired a planner. Um, he wrote. The. A very um. For lack of better term, generic version of a comp plan, and so now we're at the stage where we need to put the community input into it. Um, the Lori Osher has talked with some of the people that work with her organization and said that for, I think they said like five thousand dollars that they would. Essentially go through the plan that we hired this guy to do and um, lead the community meetings and. Kind of put it all together for us. Um, so that's, that's where that piece is, and since I have not heard back from Lori Osher, that kind of. Went into the back of my mind. Um. But yeah, so we obviously don't have to have her um. Her people go through it and we could have a public hearing ourselves and put the community inputs into it ourselves. And then send it to the state for approval.
But I I was under the impression it had already been sent to the state for approval.
It has not been, no.
Um, who's, who is, in whose ball is, in whose court is this law?
Well, I'm not really sure who's, I mean, it can be in my court. Um. Depending on the situation at hand, I guess, as to what happens in my position going forward, but anyways, that's neither here nor there. But what happened basically is, it it was given um, to the town manager in the past and then. That town manager left and then it, there was like confusion as to where it was, and so I actually called the state to see. Like, what do we do now? Like, did we send it to you already? Or, because it was some people's understanding that we send it to the state and then we put the community input into it, which. To me and my brain, that makes absolutely no sense, but um. Yeah, no, the the state lady said, no, you have to have um. A a public hearing and you have to have public input into it before you send it to the state. And basically what, yeah. So.
I have a, a, like a, you have my question. Is the planning board involved in? Comprehensive?
Um.
So that's why I was wondering what, how they're involved, is it the whole airport or what?
Right.
Do, where do?
I think it is there, actually, because Cindy has been talking to me about helping her edit the document that she has.
Right.
And we just have not gotten together on it as you keep slipping, so I think it is still.
It is, it's a, it's a planning board initiative.
Right, right. Okay, I wasn't far off on that. I was just kind of, because we haven't even mentioned, like, where are they?
We had a follow-up with the planning board.
Yeah.
On.
Um, the last time I spoke with Cindy, uh, she said that her planning board voted to not revisit um, the comprehensive plan because they did. What they feel was is asked of them and now it's up to the, the community piece, which I. I can, I I can leave that part. Um, if it, if. That's where we need to go.
Well, but it's, Elena, it's a, this is statutory question. It's like, what's, what's the formal process here? We shouldn't. It should not be a matter of like who's, who's up for it. There's, there is, there's a definition here of who is responsible for. This phase of the project. I I would be, if 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 it at some point switches to the town manager. I would be very surprised. This is, this is purely a planning question.
Okay, um. Yeah, I. I don't want to use terms um, too loosely here, so. I'm gonna think about how I want to word that, but for, for. For right now, I'm just going to say I'm going to touch base with um, the, I think his name is Dean Bennett, is who actually prepared. The um. The document itself, because there was copy sent to the town manager email um, that. Back. In twenty-one sometime. And, but they weren't, they weren't completely filled out, like there was, there was places in there and then Cindy had told me it was because the town manager needed to sell those pieces out and send them back to Dean Bennett. And then um, when I had talked to Dean Bennett in the past. He. He made it seem like. No, I don't send it back to him. Um, then, then it goes to state. So then that's why I've had called the state to see like. What do we do now? And then she had asked me if we had any public meetings and I was like, well, no. And she's like, well, you need to do that. So that's pretty much where we left it off. So not really, nobody has really given me insight as to like. Whose job actually is now, other than. It needs to be somebody's job.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess my, my point here would be that there's probably, it makes sense that the town manager would be involved in, in the process, but this is, this is a. Uh, an initiative of the planning board. It doesn't get. They don't get absolved because it's reached a certain point. They can't, they also can't vote like. If it's not been. Finished, if the draft hasn't been finished, there's nothing to vote on to be done. If that makes sense.
Yep. Okay.
So the plan, am I right in understanding? The plan kinda helps us in terms of the other projects that we're taking on. That need like. Design.
Um, it's not project based.
We're not.
Theme, it's vision.
Yeah, vision, right, right. Um. Right. But it's kinda. Integrated, I think, I think.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So that's why I asked.
Uh, but anyway, Ellen, I think the. It. Have you spoken with Cindy lately?
Um, like in the last few months about it? Um, yes, and then. She had told me that she would um. She would help me i- in the next steps if I needed it, and so. Yeah, I, I'll touch base with her again, just, just to see, um. How things, how things could go.
Okay, great.
Sorry, I guess.
No, it's all connected. Um, so, so uh, to wrap up the bridge discussion, this, this, this input tonight was really, if I understand correctly, kind of FYI. And you'll keep us posted?
Yes, definitely.
All right, thanks. Motion to adjourn?
Second. Uh, tie, go ahead. You can have this one.
Okay.
I'll just go.
All in favor? All right, okay, thanks, Elena.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Take care.
Thank you.
Yeah.